Going.
All right, good afternoon. It is Tuesday, November eleventh at two P M. And we'll begin with a roll call. Starting my counter.
For hoping. I'm here.
Patrice McKay, Rachel Whipple.
Gary Garrett.
Becky Bogdan.
And George Handley is.
And Craig Christensen.
And Craig Christensen is online, is on Zoom.
Yeah, I you guys don't make me sick, but I don't want to make you sick.
All right, thanks, Craig, and and George Handley is here also. We'll begin with the minutes approval. It's proposed that we approve approve the following minutes. October seventh. The first council meeting, initial council meeting. October twenty first work meeting, October twenty first council meeting. October twenty third joint meeting with Provost School District. Provo City School Board. Any? Um, fractions or changes? Um, Kevin, I will just draw your attention to page fourteen of the school board minutes. The um. I'm sorry.
Bern's name and Jared Zeit's name.
And and now, let's see. And also, um. Counsel Vice Chair Rachel Whipple was kind enough to conduct for me because I arrived a little bit. Late. Great, thank you. All right, if there are no other. Changes. We'll declare the minutes approved by unanimous consent. First, we have a presentation regarding the Provo City Housing Authority. Rad conversion. This will be presented by Sarah Van Cleve, the Executive Director of Provo City Housing Authorities.
Oh, go to the. Dang, I thought I could. You can hide behind the podium. There we go. Okay, oh, you have slides? Yay, okay. Hi, I'm Sarah Van Cleve. For those of you who haven't met me, I'm the Executive Director of Provo City Housing. Um, Provo City Housing is undertaking what's called a RAD conversion. What RAD stands for is Rental Assistance Demonstration. Just to give you a little background, there's two cores of work that the Housing Authority does. We do the Housing Trace Voucher Program. And we do public housing. One is a rental assistance program. The other is the subsidy is somewhat. In theory, attached to the unit. Um, the current administration is very interested in getting out of the public housing business. As P C H A is because um, we would like to move further and further away from federal funds and kind of take care of ourselves. So what we intend on doing is currently, right now, the Housing Authority has two hundred and forty eight units of public housing. So the subsidy is attached to the unit. Anybody that lives in the unit receives the subsidy. They move out. They don't have a subsidy. And one hundred and eight of those units are designated for elderly and and um, disabled individuals. Um, our intention is to sell twenty single family homes that we own throughout the city of Provo. Um, two reasons. One, single family dwellings. Are a little bit harder for us to manage. You know, they're out in neighborhoods when we send out maintenance. They're out there for a while. We usually have to send two, and it's just not fundamentally um. Cost efficient for us to rent single family dwellings. And on the flip side of that coin, we need some seed money. Because what we have to do in this RAD conversion is that we have to bring our units. Up to. I don't even want to say code, like, we need to make them fully functional for the next twenty years. Because right now, Provo City Housing is just the owner operator for public housing. It is actually owned by HUD. And if they are going to turn over ownership to us, they want those properties pristine. Because they don't want us to come back in five years and say, oh, guess what? I need a new parking lot or something to that effect. So um, just to give you an idea of. The the money behind this going from public housing. To what's called a project based voucher. It's a housing trace voucher because HUD likes to make it hard. So it's going to be a housing trace voucher with the subsidy attached to the unit with a portability option for the resident. And what that basically means is that of our two hundred and twenty eight units that we have left. Our tenants will reap the benefits of the portability aspect of the Housing Trace Voucher Program, which is that they can move. And take their subsidy with them, which is something residents of public housing have never had the option to do. So I think that that is a huge opportunity um, for this community because people can. Move up, move on and move out or move over, and we can serve more people um, through this program. Just to get down to the brass tacks of things. Um, currently. Um, HUD provides me two pots of money, capital needs and operating. And to drill that down for you, they give me three hundred and ninety five dollars per month per unit. And then I collect rent from the tenant, which is about thirty percent of their income. Which most often times falls between a hundred and two hundred dollars a month. So let's just pretend I get five hundred dollars a month. Per unit to keep the lights on, put on a new roof, do whatever I need to do. The RAD conversion, switching over to the project based voucher. Will give me around twelve hundred dollars a month per unit. So. Just to. Make the math simple, that is an increase of rent that I will col- that P C H A will collect is. One million, three hundred and eighty nine thousand dollars. That is a huge difference between the one million. Um, that I'm collecting currently. So um, the other thing is, is that you probably all understand that. If you get money from the federal government, there's an incredible amount of monitoring. We have to pay for that monitoring. That will go away and we will just rely on our traditional auditing that we do. Um, for the state and for the um, for HUD. Um, and so. What are we going to do in the housing in the housing to make it perfect? You should have gotten uh, iteration or renditions. I brought one with me.
We did.
Um, this is just our one bedroom. Uh, we uh.
Yeah, we have it on the screen too, Sarah.
Oh, yeah, okay. So these are our one bedroom units, and right now. They are built, they were built in. Some of them in nineteen seventy one and earlier. They are dark. They have little amenities. There's no openness. There's lack of counter space. They're just. Not up to what's on the open market. So our intention is to not only upgrade them with hard surfaces, hard floors. We're going to put in an island. Remove right now. They have cabinets that hang down this low, so you can go like that. But it's not an island. So it'll give them seating, and then we're also going to increase the number of ADA units that we have because. The the standards have changed. So what was. Considered ADA in nineteen seventy one is not what's considered ADA now, and the number of units um, that meets the requirement is also very different. So we're going to increase the number of accessible units that we have.
Why are some of this?
Why are some of the walls differentiated with blue?
So this is an accessible unit, so it just means this is going to be modified for accessibility, so it's either going to be lower.
Oh, yeah.
As and this is a non accessible unit. But one thing that we are going to do, like, this is a rendition for Valley Villa, if you're familiar with our town. Valley Villa is right behind our office. And we're going to go ahead and move towards putting in roll in showers because it's a just it's an elderly building. And bathtubs are um, well, they're just not the preferred choice these days. But yeah, so that's what the difference in the blue is. And. So the other things that we're going to do that are not so pretty. Are we going to be um, replacing all the piping from the street to our buildings, whether it's a duplex? Or our um, elevator buildings. We're hoping to add one more elevator to another elevator building called Mountain View, which is over kind of in the center of town. Um, and then. Update roofs, HVAC systems, all of those systems that we don't really see from the street, so that the units are healthy. So. I'm kind of being quick, because I know you have a big meeting today. Um, my reason being here today is that I think it's important that um, everybody knows. What the Housing Authority is doing with our housing stock because it's our housing stock for the city of Provo. I mean, Provo City Housing man- manages it, maintains it, but it's it's our citizens that are living there. And um, you know, there's a little heartburn with us selling the twenty houses, but we've met individually with those families. And we're working out plans for them. They will continue to be subsidized. It just won't be in the house they live in now. So does anybody have any questions? We're working with a developer out of Montana called Good Housing Neighbors because there is. So much paperwork with HUD. And we did submit our application during the closer clo- uh, closure. We were hoping to have a um, approved application. Um, by January or February, I've kind of kicked that down the road to March or April with the kind um, situation, so they can get caught up. And we've. Met with the cities, we've met um, with Housing Utah Court because we are going to be applying for tax credits for our elevator buildings. Because we're going to redo the elevators and that's very expensive. We're going to need tax credits rehab for that. But most of the funding will um, from the assets of, oh, that's one major thing, is that um. When we transfer ownership from HUD, it's actually not going to be owned by Provo City Housing Authority. It's actually going to be owned. By the arm of the Provo City Housing Authority called Utah Regional Housing, which is our nonprofit. Because owning properties under a nonprofit actually opens the door for you to apply for other grant funds that you wouldn't normally. Um, be eligible for from the Housing Authority.
And that's the same entity that will hold our workforce housing. Yes, yes.
Those twenty houses are spread around the city, aren't they? I want to say there are a couple in Joaquin. Okay, they're they're just spread throughout.
Mm hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And and um. It's interesting because they're larger bedrooms, so we have bigger families that are living in them, so. We have options for them. They'll all receive what's called a tenant protection voucher. So they can go um, and rent another place and still have subsidy. Um, some people are going to actually graduate. They're making enough money so that they no longer need the subsidy, but we have these rules. Once you hit that match, you can still stay for two years. So they're kind of in their two year period. But I I have a single resident that is upset about this. They're very excited. It's going to be a lot of work. In some circumstances, we will have to relocate. Excuse me, relocate people out of their unit while we remodel it. And and then put them back in. So there's a lot of moving pieces, but um. And that's why we have a consultant because they've been through it before. I've been through a RAD conversion when it first came out in twenty fifteen and it. Was horrible. They uh, basically just swapped me out instead of giving me capital needs and operating. They. Just gave me RAD rents that didn't even equal to what I was getting, and I at one point even had to remove the grass and put in rock. Because I couldn't afford landscaping. And you know, that's where we're at. If we don't have the money to pay for something, the other thing is um. So like, right now, we have, we have capital needs. If I don't use it, I lose it. I don't get to c- collect the interest off of it. I just, it's just there and it's held by HUD. Now I will collect the rent and we cash flow very well. Um, in Provo and we make a significant amount of additional funds that now we can put into reserves. Where before, if I didn't spend it, I would lose it. And and you know, there's always things to spend money on, but we want to be methodical and take care of our properties, not to spend money because we're going to lose it. If that makes sense.
Any other questions for Sarah?
Um, I know that I've been on the board and we're really excited about this, and we have great board members and legal experts who have. Looked at everything and. It'll be in the our best interest.
Yeah, I've been dragging my feet on it because they call RAD rents and they just didn't pencil out, like I said, and then um. A P I H notice came out in December of twenty twenty four that um, allowed us to do ninety percent of our portfolio in the. Project based voucher world, so that just, you know, doubled our money. So it made sense, and then, of course, we got in line right away. Because you never know whether you're going to change something. The the program itself is due to expire in twenty twenty nine. So and you know, Provo City Housing, I've been with them for two and a half years, but they've they've just done a phenomenal job caring for their properties. I met an executive director last month whose properties are in such disarray, she can't even apply for a RAD conversion. Because there's not enough money to fix what's broken. So I feel really blessed that we are in the position that we're in and that um. You know, we're able to up update our units and, you know. Be competitive. Some of our units are pretty plain and, you know, they need a. A little lipstick. But uh, my reason for being here today is I just, you know, again, just want everybody to know what's going on. I'm not asking for an approval, I just. You know, everything that we're presenting to residents is on our website. There's a tab at the top that says RAD conversion. As we get the application approved, we'll start loading that stuff up so that the information is there if you ever want to. Fall asleep.
Thank you. I'm I'm so happy that you're doing this.
Oh, good.
Um. On the properties that you're selling, those single family homes. Um, are are we doing anything to make sure those will go to families instead of investors or do we have constraints on who we are selling it to? So can we have constraints?
Well, we we couldn't. Um, we do not have a duly elected resident council. And it's. You know, you can have one. You don't have to have one. We have what's called a resident action board. But if you um, have a duly resident, a duly elected resident council, HUD will um, force you. To sell those units to people that are on the resident council or your tenants. And we had hoped that maybe we could work it out so some of the tenants could purchase their homes. The market doesn't lend itself to that. What we are doing is I reached out to um, Utah Preservation. Housing where they buy housing and they keep it affordable, so they're looking at some of our duplexes. Because they're all like, we have this. We have like little cul-de-sacs of properties, and so we're trying to see if we can find investors to maybe just buy all those units. The families will get tenant protection vouchers, so they just turn around and just rent their house again through the voucher program. And we can't do that because um. U R H would have to buy all the properties and we we don't want to use our funds that way. And. I do have a real estate agent and she's also looking. For investors that would turn around and rent the houses back to the uh. Tenant, but I really don't have any jurisdictional. Uh, authority. To lower the price of the houses. So you either sell it to a lower income family or you have to sell it at market rate. And the other thing that concerns me, just one more, just the other thing that concerns me is that, like, again, I said these houses were built in the early seventies. We're not allowed to do anything to them, so I can't put on a new roof and I can't put in new windows. I mean, I I could barely probably even go in and paint, so I don't want to put somebody in that's already income. Stretched into a house where they may have some capital needs that need to be taken care of.
Yeah, well, and if it needs significant work, then that could affect somebody's ability to get a loan or mortgage for it, right? So you'd be looking more at somebody who could pay cash.
Yeah, and you know, our our units are are well kept, but we don't have hardwoods. And we barely have dishwashers. Um, we don't have fireplaces. We don't have, we do have, most of them have nice sized yards, which is. I have two dogs, so every time I see a house, I'm like, yeah, the dog has. So um, I think that that's a selling point, and they are in nice neighborhoods. They're, you know, look like first time home buyer neighborhoods to me. And so we'll just have to see. I haven't really pushed the envelope because I want my application to be approved because like, right now, HUD could say no. And then. We're just back to square one. I don't think that's going to happen, but once we actually get the approval, then we'll really look at. What our options are. But yeah, I it it does worry me a little bit that people will come in and. Buy the houses, I don't know, and flip them and make money.
Yeah.
Which they could because there's room for flip. You know, the carpet is indoor outdoor carpeting. It's all the same color. Yeah.
But I think that could be, they could be good. Homes for people who do want to stay in them, who do want to work on them and switch them. So can we, once we have it approved, can we make it? Because I know we talked about this in our board meeting once. Can we make it? Could we, can the reliter try and look for those, the people that do want to own, or is that?
Yes, no, we absolutely can look.
Okay.
Difference is that with people that have a duly elected resident council, HUD says you must.
Yeah, okay.
Sell to lower income families. And.
And it's not about lower income families. It can even just be someone who.
Right, they want the house to be together to the people that are living in that house. Um. Uh, Pierce County Housing Authority is doing a big RAD conversion. He had a hundred and fifty houses that they sold. And they sold quite a few of them to Habitat for Humanity and. Not having much luck with Habitat for Humanity in Provo. Um, so there's that. And but. We have discussed, and we will discuss it further once the application is approved. Um, Provo City Housing has what's called a land trust, which is a part of the workforce housing. And if we could generate the funds to purchase the homes, put them in the land trusts and then turn around and sell them to. Um, our clients at a decreased rate because they wouldn't have to pay for their property, that would be amazing.
Okay.
So I'm kind of hoping that.
So you're thinking about all this stuff.
There's a few families that I would love to see stay in their homes. They they've been there for a while and the kids are settled and. And it just would be a feel good moment to let them stay. The other thing that um. Provo City has the option of doing that it hasn't done, but I've done it in my previous positions, which is allowing a person to use their Section Eight voucher to purchase their home. So we could. Put all of that together and make it work. But until we get the application approved, I don't want. To get that ball rolling, only to have somebody be very disappointed. Because if I can't, if they say no, then I can't, even if we worked, I couldn't turn around and sell those units.
Yeah, could we combine that with some of our other programs for down payment assistance?
Absolutely, like that. One hundred percent. There's no restriction on um. The funding and for the land trust, I'm working right now with Fannie Mae to get us approved by Fannie Mae so that. When people apply for loans, um, and then they get sold, Fannie Mae would be in line to buy those mortgages. And and they are a big proponent for land trusts, so.
Well, thank you, Sarah. We appreciate the great work you're doing and a great service to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, and you guys have a lovely afternoon and happy Veterans Day.
Thank you.
Thank you, goodbye.
Thank you. Next, we have a discussion regarding possible code changes to the Neighborhood District Program, presented to us by Rachel Breen.
Hey. Good afternoon, Council. So is this working? Oh, there we go. So last time I was here, we talked about a possible split of the Carterville neighborhood. So the Carterville neighborhood, it actually goes here and then it's all this over here, and we talked about a possible split along the Provo River. Because there is that physical divide. In the neighborhood right now, and also the Carterville neighborhood has two or three times as many residents. As the other neighborhoods in District Four and. And last time you had said for me to ask, talk to the Neighborhood District, see how they felt with the leaders and. Almost all of them were for it, um, and one was a maybe. So and there are reasons for was that the needs are very different between upper and lower Carterville. Upper is a little bit more res- um, single family homes, lower is a small strip of single family homes, but mostly student apartments. If split, the population would be similar to the other neighborhoods. There is already that physical divide. The neighborhood doesn't really associate with each other because they have the Provo River dividing it. The area needs more representation because they have um. More problems. They've had the problems, which now is being fixed with the sewer line, but there's a lot of problems with parking. Uh, with um, some commercial, the event centers and other things in that neighborhood. The residents are in favor and the Carterville representatives are in favor. The concerns that was from one District Four board member. Was the ability to find good representatives from both neighborhoods. But the current representatives gave me names of people that were interested. And then.
From the new, from the lower.
Right, from lower and upper, because right now our representatives, we do have one from upper, one from lower, and so they gave, they each gave me names of people that. Um, would be interested. And then. Another concern was, and I wasn't quite sure how to fix this, the imbalance of. Houses and student apartments because. So this, so this is mostly single, single family homes kind of up here. And then kind of the duplexes and things there, and then the apartments, the mix at Rivers Edge. Right there. Well, this one just has that little strip of single family homes on Three Hundred West. And right here, and then the rest are apartments. So I think no matter really like how you split it, it's. It's going to be uneven, but. They were thinking, it's mostly that physical divide of the Provo River in that the two sides of the neighborhoods don't. Interact with each other. And so the question is. Do you want to divide the Carterville neighborhood, make it. Two neighborhoods, and the suggestion was Upper Carterville to stay Carterville. Lower Carterville to be renamed Brickyard in honor of the Provo Brickyard that was in. That location over by where Shirley's Bakery is now. Um. If that's something you. Would like to consider, and if so, that would be a change we would need to make to the Provo City map for the neighborhood districts. I'm for it.
Becky?
I'm not for it. Um. The more I dug into this, the more. Joaquin's wanted to split for years, and Joaquin has been told no. And if we do this. By population, to me, we should do every neighborhood by population. So to me, it this opens up doors. I don't even know that we're ready to open. I would like to have some kind of a policy on when they would split. What I was told before is the reason for splitting was because they physically had to go out and. Tape notes to the doors and and do things like that, but now that we have a program where it's in a. A district and not a neighborhood program, it has changed. And now we do things more electronically. It's not as a physical task of going and putting things on the doors. So it just, it, they just said, once it got to be so big. It just was physically impossible, and so they split them. Um, and now that we're in a neighborhood board, that's the point of the board is to absorb it all. So to me, this would be a hard no until we have some kind of a policy of what makes sense when it splits. I mean, even with the West Side growth, if we're looking at population, then we're just opening up. You know, without a policy, we're just opening up doors for just whatever. So yeah, that's that's my reasoning. It would be a hard no unless we had some kind of a policy stating when a neighborhood could split, what would be appropriate for it to split.
Rachel, how many neighborhoods do we have?
We have thirty four.
Thirty four. Do you know when the last split was?
Was in the nineties.
Oh, that long ago.
Oh, wait, I'm trying to remember. It was Lakeview North and Lakeview South.
Okay.
It was the most recent. I think the Dixon Temp was in the nineties. And I think Lakeview North, Lakeview South was early two thousand, so it's been quite a while. Since a neighborhood has split. I will say that the Provo River is the dividing line between. Neighborhoods. It's only the Carterville where the Provo River does not. Um, divi- is not the dividing line.
Rachel, do you have any information on the Joaquin city division? Uh, to a neighborhood there that wanted to split but was not allowed to move or?
There haven't been discussions on that for for a few years now. Um, I don't know if seeing this change would reignite those. I mean, if we had a split, it'd probably be along Five Hundred North.
Yep.
And.
Okay.
Which would would make sense in some ways. Um, but. They've done a pretty good job of like the. The people who own homes in the southern half of Joaquin, looking out for the north part of Joaquin. And trying to represent those student interest. Um. I I really like this and I'm supportive of it in part because this is supported by the neighborhood and by the the representatives there. And the more that we can empower them within this sphere of influence that we. And the more that we can empower them within this sphere of influence that we give them, I think is right. You know, as a council, we've got criticism for having too much control. Over the neighborhood program and their representatives. And this is one way that we are respecting them and letting them. Shape it so that it actually serves the needs of the residents, which is what we want.
Brian, could you just um educate me or us on what it means to um. Identify formally, officially identify a neighborhood. This would be a thirty-fifth neighborhood. What does that mean? Does it bind the city in any way or, but it does require a council vote?
Well, the the map is in the code, so if you want to amend the map, you're amending the code. Only thing it affects is the neighborhood program.
Okay, not um number of fire stations or?
No, its only impact is determining where people. Can be appointed from to the district boards and who they represent.
Counselor Hoben?
Um so how has participation in the program been? Like if we split, are we gonna struggle to find representatives from both sides or should we find?
Right now, we should be fine. Kind of historically, the representatives have always been from upper Carterville. And that has been an argument from lower Carterville and that they felt like they weren't being represented. Um now we have some strong people in lower Carterville that are really wanting to see changes in their area. And so right now I have um. Two, the one that's a representative now and a possible representative. For upper Carterville and then the one that's a representative now and two possible representatives for lower Carterville.
How do you feel about your ability to manage another neighborhood?
I think it should be fine. District four is one of my very cohesive and organized. Ones. It's it's a smaller area than the other ones. Um population wise, it's one of our largest. It's almost as large as District Five, population wise. But just the square footage, you know, square footage, it's smaller, so it's a little bit easier to maintain. They're in favor of it. On that and I don't, I don't think there would be a problem. They they are the only district that has five neighborhoods. All the rest have six or more. So this would actually make them e- equal to the other.
So district is smaller, the neighborhood itself is twice as large as typical. There's support from both sides of the neighborhood. You feel comfortable with it. I don't see an issue.
Any other question? So and we, the vote would be here as opposed to a council meeting?
Well, I think I think it would be a motion for me to return to a council meeting for an actual vote since we need to change the map in the code.
Alright, then I'll entertain a motion to. Take this to a vote at a council meeting. Motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Hoben and a second by Counselor McKay. Counselor Hoben? Yes. Counselor McKay? Counselor Lippel? Counselor Garrett? Yes, Counselor Handley? Counselor Bogdan? Counselor Christensen? So that motion passes by a vote of six, one. So we'll see you first meeting in December?
Yeah, whatever, whatever I'll I'll try to get on.
The District Four meeting a week from tomorrow?
Yeah, so that's something that we can give them an update on. On that. And then our next possible change with this recent election. Um and I think personally, this shows how great the neighborhood district program is going. That people were confused on which. Council district they were in because they're so used to going by their neighborhood district. And they're both have numbers, so it was very confusing. And so we spent, Heidi and I spent a lot of time explaining to residents. That their neighborhood district wasn't the same as their council district and how council districts. Are by precincts, they're redone every ten years, the neighborhood districts are more historical. So it caused a a lot of confusion when people. Received their ballots and they're like, wait, this isn't who I thought I was voting for. Um and so one of the suggestions we had. Was to maybe rename the neighborhood districts to make them different from the council districts. So keep the council districts one, two, three, four, five. But change the neighborhood districts. One suggestion from a resident was A, B, C, D, E. Another one was doing it like the former area councils that we had as part of the neighborhood program. Where it describes the area, so northeast, southeast, southwest, northwest, central. And again, this is something where if you wanted to make that change. It would show up on that same map, so it would need to go to a city council meeting in order for us to change the map.
Okay. Comments, Counselor Bogdan?
I don't like the northeast, southeast, southwest, northwest, central. I think that's gonna be just as confusing because technically Lakeview North and Great, Lakeview South are northwest. And you're talking about northwest being Grandview, Carterville, which isn't really northwest. I like the alphabet letters better.
We see the map again too as we think about the names.
Right, and there's been other thoughts of maybe like west, Provo, but it's it's just hard like. Like, like is that east or is this east and southeast, but a lot of this is up north. And so the the direction is is confusing.
Counselor, okay.
I have to admit, sorry Becky, I do, I am partial to the like northeast. I think it helps people. Understand it better. I think A, B, C will be confusing for some to keep track of. And I know it's not perfect, but it's, it's not crazy. I like it's still tells you this general direction.
So four would be northwest.
And that's just historically how the area councils were named in the old program. We could call them different.
So what's District Three called?
District Three is southwest, but it could just be west.
Which would really feed into the problems we're having right now at the grocery store, southwest versus northwest. I just don't think it's a good idea.
You think it's gonna create animosity? You think it's a negative thing, like it's.
Positively a negative thing.
But if we just called it west, would that work?
Still, you have like Franklin that considers themselves west Provo. So I mean, you're just, to me, it's a can of worms. And you're still gonna be, I mean, even I call my district west Provo because I can't. This is the whole thing that I had even campaigning is what do you call it? Because you can't say. So Franklin Franklin South, they're still west Provo. It's just, it's a whole. It's a whole issue.
Well, I don't have a problem with the lettering system either as. As as one who's just now memorizing the numbers.
Is this mine or not?
And that's something I can reach out to residents, I can reach out to the neighborhood districts and see if they have ideas. If it's something that you want to get more suggestions. Those were just the two suggestions we were given during the election season.
Should we have a competition and let them come up with names and then take a vote? Me and your, me and your district. Or the mosquito district.
Pick pick some names that.
I mean, there could be fun ones, right? Because we have like the Bonneville District and.
You can act just distinction characteristics from U- from Utah or Provo and just. They don't have to match, right? You could have the river district and the mountain district and the.
We do not want to be the lake district. No, that was a whole thing back when Beth was trying to figure out another name for the West Side.
Oh, man, high maintenance.
Yes, we are.
So my numbers and letters seem better to me.
Because if you pick a name like that, yeah, you imply things that are just not accurate. You know? People want to know the boundaries, they can go look at the map. You can describe it. You can say, well, uh this is what I do. I say, well, okay, roughly just north of. We have a hockey team that's a mammoth. I've never seen a mammoth in Utah either.
Yes, actually Huntington Reservoir, they found the mammoth skeleton, so.
So we would need a motion then to take this also to.
Or, yeah, if you, if you want me to take it to the residents or neighborhood. Or if you feel it's a non-issue and just keep it the way it is.
Oh, it's an issue the way it is.
With the voting, for voting?
It was even an issue when I read. People get so confused.
District A, well, I want to be A. Well, okay, we'll have you A, you A, A two. I'm kidding.
Well, it sounds like there's a willingness to rename Rachel, so let's look for a motion to forward this then. To the council meeting as well for a vote and we can decide on. Letters or names.
We don't want this to go to the neighborhoods for a vote and then come back.
So you're looking for a motion that would change the map, but we're going to leave the name blank for now and we will fill it in at that time. So that we can get feedback. Is that the idea?
Uh, no.
I could see a lot of fun excitement with that.
I mean, I'm I'm hearing a consensus around letters, but that decision would probably be made at the vote, right?
I I guess it it could be because we could have it come to the meeting to change it to be letters. And at that point, if somebody wants to do a substitute motion and say instead of A, we are the albatrosses, we could do that, but. But I think if we, by doing it a motion now, then Rachel will be able to come back with one change. For the map and that will be a little bit of efficiency. But the the question is, do we, do we want to define now what the names of the different districts will be? Or do we want opportunity for civic engagement and elementary school children to name the. The districts in their area or something like that?
I think it would be a fun engagement opportunity.
It it just sounds like more work to me. I I question, we're spending a lot of time on this. I I just question the whole value. Um I I I suggest we just keep it the way it is.
And not even change the, change it to letters.
If if you wanted to go crazy, let's use A, B, C, D.
Alright, so I will. We we. Changed the map and for now, we would be renaming the districts A, B, C, D, and E. Instead of one, two, three, four, and five. That's my motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'd second that.
Motion by Counselor Whipple with a second by Counselor Bogdan. Counselor McKay? Counselor Whipple? Counselor Garrett? Yes, Counselor Handley? Counselor Bogdan? Counselor Hoben? And Counselor Christensen?
I can do that.
Okay. We have six yeses and one if I have.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you very much. I will come back in December.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rachel. A new uh. Next, we have an update regarding reimagining code enforcement and civil fines presented to us. By Scott Johnson, zoning administrator. Welcome, Scott.
Thank you. Good afternoon. So as you're all aware, we've been working on a few. Uh changes and we've implemented a few new things in code enforcement to try to. Improve efficiency and also improve um our results of what we're we're doing throughout the city. And so I'm here today to talk about some of those things that have taken place and some of the results that we're starting to see. Um that I think we're promising. Um first of all, uh body cameras. Uh in September, we receive our body cameras. Each staff member is assigned a camera and they've been using them out in the field now. Along with that, we separated each code officer, so now instead of going out in pairs, they go out individually. Allowing for more efficiency with their time to be able to go out and address more issues throughout the city. Um or address issues a little bit faster. Um and also body cameras are proving to be an excellent resource in gathering information. And being able to review um after the fact, what's been seen and what's been observed. Observed or said during those interactions. Absolutely, absolutely concerned with safety. Um I've, I always use the the back of the hair analogy with my staff that. If you're about to go somewhere and you have that feeling of the back of your hair, you know, the neck hairs on the back of your neck popping up. Get out of there and call a C O P officer to come with you. We have that ability. We've worked great with the C O P officers. On many occasions where they've come out with us and just provided backup and assistance that has been invaluable. They're great to work with and and we will continue to use them. So I know parking enforcement has seen an improvement with the way that people interact with them. Because of the body cameras directly. And honestly, I don't. I don't know of any time with any of my staff where they've. Actually been threatened. There's been some concerns or whatnot. There's been people that they think might be. But there's never been a direct threat. Right, and when an instance like that, I don't think even a body cam- or having two people would have prevented that from happening.
Parking enforcement is definitely more um confrontational than zoning enforcement.
Oh, are they?
And the cameras have made a difference.
Yeah, yeah, the part, yeah, confrontation, absolutely, because they're right there giving a ticket. Somebody comes out, don't give me anything, yeah. So yeah, it's created a lot of efficiency. One in particular um point is our our rental license uh inspections. We've been able able to be a whole lot more efficient in scheduling those. Because Travis doesn't have to try to schedule with five other code officers. And figure out when they're available to also be able to go out. And so he's able to just schedule and go out when he is, as he's available. So yeah, Travis goes out on his own. He's got his body camera and and conducts those inspections all on his own. Um the second thing I wanted to talk about was the letters. Um so this is taking the county data for. Um properties throughout the city, comparing it with city data and seeing if we can figure out. Where there are properties that might be used as rentals that we don't have on our radar. Um starting in June, we were sending out, we started sending out letters to. All the properties that we're seeing through that cross referencing. Uh as of the end of October, we sent six hundred and eighty letters and um. Showing on these graphs, you know, year by year, we've seen a drastic increase. Um I even have updated numbers as of the end of October. We had six hundred and nine rental license applications come in, which is a big increase from years previous. Um and just in the month of October, um so the graph on the right, a total of eighty-eight. Um rental licenses came in during that month. So we. The combination of. The increased licenses and the body cameras, Travis was very grateful that he could just schedule. The inspection and go out and not having to rely on others. Um because he, in in the month of July, he started pointing out to me that there's, or was it July? Yeah. He's like, there's, there's a lot more coming in. Um he was noticing it and the body cameras. And separating, being able to go out on his own, really helped him be able to manage that increase.
Scott, when was your Pleasant View Blitz? Was that?
That that was in September.
So these numbers reflect that as well?
Yeah, so this this captures some of that um efforts as well. And then just as a point of reference, so far in November, I ran this number today, we've received thirty-four rental license applications. So we're, we're seeing a a pretty good increase based on sending these letters and we're continuing to send out. Um on average, uh I believe a hundred and fifty letters a month um to properties, just letting them know.
So on those rental do I license applications? So on those rental dual license applications, how many of them have to be rejected? Because we find out that like a, a house in Joaquin that had been operating as a duplex for thirty years doesn't have legal documentation to continue to operate as a duplex?
We are definitely seeing that. Uh, it's not a majority. Uh, it's a minority of the, of the applications that come through. Um, as I was looking through some of that data today, I was noticing there's a little bit of that, and also people that applied for their application but didn't pay, and so licensing canceled their license. And so we're gonna be following up with those to make sure that they follow through with getting the license application and make sure that any occupancy or use issues get resolved as well.
Do you have any idea percentage-wise what Rachel's asking as far as, like, is it five or like twenty-five?
I would say between eight and ten.
Okay, great.
All right. So the next slide goes to the Blitz. Um, so this was a surprising experience that we had, uh, going through the Pleasant View neighborhood. Um. Just for a background of what we did, um, we, we first of all looked at all of the single-family residential properties in the entire neighborhood, mapped them out, separated out into six different groups, and had each code officer go through that entire section and knock every single, single-family residential property in that neighborhood. Um, so it was a total of three hundred and fifty doors were knocked. Um. And we asked all the normal questions, trying to figure out, you know, what's going on at the property, who lives there, um, if they're renting, if they have a basement apartment that they're renting, or, you know, trying to find as much information as we can. Um, a hundred and eighty-seven of those properties we found to be perfectly fine in compliance with code. Um.
Like a full start, like, good job.
Yeah. Um. That, that, that's a good idea. Maybe we'll start putting those out there. Um. A hundred and twelve properties, we didn't get an answer, and so we're in the process this week of going out and re-knocking. Um. We found thirty properties that were in violation of the A D U ordinance. So it was either the fact that they had an A D U, it was owner occupied, they just didn't have the license, or previous owners had established an A D U and now it's being rented out as a duplex. And so we've opened cases on all those and have been going through the enforcement process on those. Um, as well as sixteen properties being rented out without a license, just as a single family. Um, and then five other properties had landscaping or parking issues that were aggressive as well. Yes.
Out of curiosity, how many people told you to go pound sand? How many people told you the truth? How many people lied to you? If you came to my door, I'd say, out. None of your business.
So we've, we've had that. I don't, I mean, maybe one or two gave us a lot of flack
Yeah.
in, in this experience. It was a very, very positive experience overall.
Good.
Um, in, in just talking with people, educating them, learning about the neighborhood, learning about issues. We had some neighbors that said, oh, yeah, well, this property, this property, this property. They would point out properties in their neighborhood that hadn't been on our radar, and some that had been. And so we're like, great, this is good information. This will help us as we move forward with any enforcement areas or enforcement actions.
It's only a lot kinder than I would have been for somebody who's not coming to it. Good, that's good to hear.
What, what is S F R?
Single-family residence.
Oh, okay.
So they just did, yeah.
I thought maybe it was a typo for short-term rental.
No, no, I, I don't think we, in fact, I know based on at least the door knocking that we did, we, we didn't find any um, short-term rentals being used at that point. Doesn't say they're not. We, we have other methods that we're utilizing to try to find those and enforce on them, but. Yeah, this is something that, um, we're gonna be doing more throughout the city. Um, based on the experience we had here, it was, it was a pleasant surprise as to the, what we were able to do. And so we're gonna be working with neighborhood chairs to, to pinpoint areas where they see, um, specific needs in their areas that we could, that we could target to go out and, and do blitzes um, either small or large scale, whatever the need is, um, and, and do it on a, on a basis where we can, you know, be effective, but also make sure we're not, um, neglecting other enforcement cases that are, are going on. Um.
Hey, hey, Scott?
Yes.
Uh, let me just say bravo. Um, this is fabulous. I, I applaud the, uh, the focus, the concentration, and the kind of results that you're getting, so, uh, thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I know my staff appreciates that. It's a, um, they, they have a very thankless job in many, many instances, so I, I appreciate that, and I'll, I'll give that back onto my staff to let them know that, um, that their efforts are being noticed.
Two things. Um, I'm sure you would wanna put Tree Streets on that list.
Yeah, oh, there's, there are definitely areas where I have ideas that I, I want to focus on.
Run that out there. The second one is, can I make sure I understand, found in compliance, that doesn't mean, that just means no violations of any kind. That doesn't mean they had rentals that were in compliance. It just means there were no issues.
Correct. It, well, it, it's a combination of that. It's, we knocked on the door, and it's the owners that live there. It's only the owners that live there. They don't have anything. There's no violations. We knocked on it. We knew ahead of time, cuz we went through and made sure we knew which properties had rental licenses, verified that it is only occupied by one family, so they're good. There were.
I'm just wondering if by the time you're done, when you finish those a hundred and twelve, it might be very useful data to know by, you know, legal or, or illegal, what are the numbers of homes in that neighborhood that have rentals at all? That I think would be super useful data point.
Uh, yeah.
That would help us with that area, but then it might start building interesting data for the rest of the city when you go around to different, cuz then you'd have points of comparison. But anything closer to campus typically has the highest pressure for that kind of stuff going on. And if we find out what the percentages look like, that, I think that's pretty helpful.
Yeah. Are, are you thinking of strictly a rental property as a whole, or like the A D U rental along with, or a combination?
Combination, yeah, because I think in our conversations with B Y U and housing units that they're willing or not willing to build for their students, if we have data right around the campus that shows how many rentals are occurring in percentages of those housing units, I think that's extremely useful information.
Yeah, how many are just like, well, single-family rentals? How many's A D U rental? Obviously, we're getting rid of the illegal duplexes, right? But just inventory stock in what they're dealing with their property.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, if they're being that compliant just to come to your door, and you come to their door and they're willing to tell their story, uh, it's, it's an opportunity to get a lot of information.
Yeah.
What kind of pressures they're feeling, why they're doing what they're doing, you know?
I agree.
It would also be helpful to keep track of the number of unpermitted A D Us that are being used and houses that are being used as, um, unpermitted duplexes. Because as we do enforcement on that, what we're doing is taking it from two households down to one household. And so being able to quantify how much, um, actual housing stock we are decreasing through this enforcement will be useful, because right now we have these huge market forces on us. There's not enough housing with these illegal units. And so it would be helpful to find out, you know, what the effects of our enforcement are on housing availability. If we end up taking, you know, a hundred units out of circulation, then we really need to try to provide those units somewhere else in the city.
Oh. So I heard an interesting point the other day, and I was given a name of a developer that I need to call. The developer was talking to a friend of mine that said that rentals, they're not needed anymore. There's, there's a lot of open space in the rentals. This isn't the first time I've heard it. I've actually heard it from another friend a few months ago. So if we do have some of these apartment complexes that are going unrented, I'm not worried that we don't have the stock for people to move there. What it is, is either location or people are just trying to, yeah.
Yeah, cuz I think a lot of the A D Us are cheaper than the new apartment complexes that have been built.
Maybe, oh, maybe it's just, now I have run it out.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, civil fines. I just wanna go briefly over what our process is and answer any questions that you may have on this. Um. I'll, I'll say at the outset that I'm continually working on refining this because it is a new process. There's some things that we're, we're looking on to make it, um, better than what it is here. Uh, overall, just like most enforcement cases, the case is open. We investigate it. We issue a notice of violation. Once we verify uh, that a violation has existed, they're given fourteen days to comply. Um, once that fourteen-day compliance is up, and, sorry, let me step back just for a second. On the notice of violation, it does outline and explain that if they don't comply by the compliance date, they will be issued daily fines in the amount of one hundred dollars per day per violation. Uh, and that they have to contact us to schedule an inspection to verify that they've come to compliance. Um, so they have fourteen days to comply. Um, once that compliance date is up, if they have not complied and have not reached out to us to schedule an inspection, um, we start tracking the fines, um, at a hundred dollars a day per violation per day. Um. In addition to that, the notice of violation is recorded on the property as a notice of non-compliance, and that's part in code that, that, that we're allowed to do. Um, and that in a few instances has been very helpful where we've been enforcing on a property owner and they say, oh, I'm just gonna sell it. Okay. Well, we're gonna record this notice of non-compliance on your property, and any title company is gonna come to, come to me and say, hey, can you take that off? And I'll say, no, until it's compliant. And so that's been a help in some instances. Um. After, um, as the fines are assessed, um, after each thirty-day increment of, of fines being assessed, um, the, uh, we send out an invoice for those thirty days of accrued fines. Um, if they're not paid within sixty days, and that is a a citywide standard for, from financing, that any invoice that's sent out, they have sixty days to pay. Um, we, we can't shorten that in any way, shape, or form unless we shorten it for the entire city, and finance isn't willing to do that at this point. Um. So they have sixty days to pay. After sixty days, uh, we start sending out reminders that you, your payment was due, you're thirty days late, sixty days late, ninety days late, and at a hundred and twenty days late, um, they get sent to collections. Now, this is a section that at least right now, we can shorten, and I'm intending to move that back to, um, and talking with Bill, forty-five days. Um, we'll, we'll send you a thirty-day reminder that you've, your, your past due. At forty-five days, we're gonna send you to collections. And that's something I'm working on implementing now, um, just to kind of shorten that timeframe. Um, cuz as you see, even, even with all these threats, not very many people have paid yet. Which is another thing we're trying to figure out and work on, how, how to get them to pay.
Scott, it would be interesting to see, um, numbers relative to this slide as well. Um, how many cases have been sent to collections? How many cases are being investigated? How many notices of violation have been issued? On that, in, in, oh, okay.
I have that. We're getting to it. Yes.
Um, Scott, you said that, um, you know, not many people are paying. Are more, are a larger percentage of people getting in compliance, though?
Yes, yes. And that's, that's kind of what I wanna talk about here is. So to answer the, some of the numbers questions, the total of a hundred and fifty-six cases from um, the time we implemented the civil fines process to the end of October, we send a notice of violation threatening civil fines. Eighty-six of those cases were resolved. Um, six cases. I'm gonna have to remember exactly how I, I put these numbers. So yeah, six of those cases, um, were invoiced, uh, for fines. Um, now, some of those cases had multiple invoices because it's every thirty days and in the early onset of the civil fines process, the fine structure was a little bit different. The count, you know, I came to you and we adjusted the fine schedule, so some of them have multiple invoices on them. Yeah, eighty of those eighty-six cases were resolved prior to any fines accrued. So, great results. Um. Out of the hundred and fifty-six, we still have seventy that are kind of in that process. Either they're working to compliance or we're accruing fines. Um, and so we're, we're working through that. Um. So this is just kind of a breakdown of how many cases or how many notices by month were sent out. And you'll see, we kind of ramped up as the year went on. As we started to see results, my staff went, I'm gonna use that. So, um, we're using it more often, um, I think. So we, in this timeframe, we've sent a total of two hundred and thirteen notices of violation. So fifty-seven notices were sent threatening criminal action, and a hundred and fifty-six were sent with civil fine. Threats, threats. Um. Here's a breakdown by neighborhood, so you can see the Pleasant View neighborhood, the Blitz really boosted those numbers. Um. The vast majority of those cases we sent with a civil fine. And now, as for the invoices, the dollar amount, so we've, we've issued a total of seventeen invoices, and the total of dollar value of that is just over fifty-seven thousand dollars. Um. So on average, thirty-four hundred dollars per invoice. Um, the one largest invoice that we've issued so far is fourteen thousand dollars, and the smallest one is five hundred and forty dollars. Um, we've only had one invoice that they've actually paid. That's nine hundred and fifty bucks that we've received. Um. Looking at how things are going, if no more invoices are paid by the end of this year, um, we have, uh, just over thirty-nine thousand dollars that are slated to be sent to collections.
On the one that was paid, did the property also come into compliance?
Yes. Yeah, so that was one where, um, the property owner came to compliance fairly quickly after we started assessing fines. They contacted me. We actually accrued more fines than what we invoiced, but because of conversations with them, we said, all right, one-time deal, I'll reduce it to this amount. You pay it, and then we'll be good. You're not getting any breaks in the future.
That's great. Yeah, because I could imagine if somebody gets that letter and they're trying to to scramble to be in compliance and schedule a time with you, there could be a few days after that fourteen before they get it done.
Right, right. And, and I've, I've talked with many people. I've had people come to me asking, well, it's gonna take thirty days to get my tenants out. Can we reduce the fine? Say, get your tenants out, then we'll talk about the fine.
Yes. That's good.
So. Please.
Um, I'm curious, what are you finding most of the violators? Are they mostly investors, or is it mostly citizens that live here in their home?
Um, it's a pretty good mix. Uh. I'll say, because we're, we've gone through the summer months, a lot of these cases, um, have been landscaping and junk issues. Um. But there's also the rental properties where it's a landlord out of town. Um. Those are some that are, we have a few cases that are accruing large amounts of fines now. Um, some of them are, a couple of them are businesses, not residential properties because of issues that have been ongoing for years that we're trying to get a, get a hold of, um, or get a handle on. Um.
Well, I, this is phenomenal, that you got that many people to come to compliance. I don't know if that's ever happened.
Yeah, and I, I love this next graph. That goes to that point. Um, so I looked initially at the, the previous six months, so looking at really when we started implementing the civil fines and the six months previous to that. So from November to April, um, kind of before we started or just the beginning of starting the civil fines, um, it was taking us on average a hundred and fifty days to close a case.
Yeah, waiting.
And as we got to that, through that next six months of May to October, it only took a hundred and two days to close.
That's the right trajectory.
Cases on average. And at the same time, we were closing seventy cases on average per month, and that's increased to a hundred and twenty-eight cases per month. So at the same time of reducing the time it takes, we're also closing more cases. Um, and then just a, a separate point of interest that I thought was interesting, um, looking at just the cases where we issued a notice for civil fines. On average, those cases only took thirty days to close, and that's the, the, um, data point down lower. Um, so. Positive results that we're gonna can, hopefully continue to see. Um, last thing I wanna talk about is the, uh, request for proposals, doing some data, um, gathering and analysis for, uh, rental properties throughout the city, um, the R F P, uh. closed as of November uh, ninth. Um, I was able to receive nine submissions, which was surprising. I up until the last minute, I'd seen two come in, and then right at the last minute, we received a whole bunch more, so. Uh, we're reviewing those, uh, looking to see if any of those, um, companies would be able to meet the requirements. I've talked a couple of times with IS about some concerns that they have overall with a project like this. They are heavily involved in in helping us review these submissions and make sure that anything that we enter into meets data security concerns that they have as well as legal concerns, so. But we're we're up, we're we're cautiously optimistic that we'll have a good program to help us out in finding rentals throughout the city. And that's all I have.
Any other questions or comments?
Scott, I've got a quick question.
Yes.
Um, when you had several come in at the very end, um, is that because people found out about it or is this a a new area that more and more companies are getting involved in? And so there were simply more vendors? Do you have any sense for that?
Um, I I think it's a combination of both. I I had a couple organizations reach out to me. Um, just kind of getting an idea to what our, um, our needs were. And you know, of course, I pointed them to what the the RFP was, um, as it's a public thing, I, anyway, the, um, I I do think it's a fairly new avenue. A lot of the organizations, um, in the past that I've talked to focus more on the short-term rental, um, data gathering aspect and not so much on the standard rental, um, the normal, you know, like KSL, apartments.com, rentler.com, those types of websites. Um, so it's gonna be interesting to see, um, what ability other, you know, organizations have to gather that data and analyze it for us.
Yeah. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Appreciate your work, presentation today. Okay, thank you. Next, we have an ordinance amending Provo City Code to reform a map related to some ADUs and to repeal the section related to special applications for ADUs presented by Malia.
Okay. Um, before we go into the actual amendments, I just wanted to give some context, and I sent this out, we sent this out in an email last Thursday, I believe. But this is a new map. Grace and I asked is the best and made us a new ADU map. It does include the little extension of Provo that we frequently do not include in the city map, but, um, just some stats as context for this discussion, because these are questions we get asked both here in our meetings and then also just by the public. So the percentage of residential zone acreage that allows for ADUs in the city is forty-eight point two-three percent. So just under half of residential zones in Provo permit ADUs, yes.
And just to clarify though, you're not counting what could be an ADU, like the whole west side potentially? Like, you're not including areas that aren't built yet, right?
We're we're counting zones, land in the city that is zoned primarily residential.
Okay, but it's not the ag- not the agricultural land that could be zoned down the road or something?
Correct.
Okay, so it has to already be zoned?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, per the definition in fourteen thirty, the ADU section of code, what the residential means. So then, percentage of all acreage in the city that allows for ADUs, this was just a question I asked. So if you don't include the little extra thing in Provo, then it's eighteen point four percent of the total city acreage that does, um, that allows ADUs. Does allow ADUs. So that's everything in Provo, eighteen percent.
We could really drive that percentage up if we just said Rock Canyon and everything above in the wilderness is all.
Yeah, it could go crazy.
It's a lot of acreage right there, you can really.
Yes, if it was zoned residential, we zoned the residential. We could do that.
I want ADUs in the wilderness. That's great.
Okay, um, next, Kevin, if you want to go to the slides. So now we'll go act, go over the actual amendments and, um, this, these are the slides we presented to Planning Commission. We, Nancy is the planner on this for Development Services, and she's in the back, so if we need, we have any Development Services questions, she is here to help us. Um, so the first one, like we talked about in our work meeting, this is just changing the map. Um, based on our discussions, Legal Development Services and Council Staff, we decided to just not have a title because it doesn't need a title, and the phrasing right before this in the section describes the map. So we just, no title, and then no labels on the grayed-out sections because again, the code describes what those are. So this is the old map, this is the new map. Planning Commission did bring up, they said, how come the ADU zones in West Provo aren't grayed out? And that is because the way that O two O is written. It says, notwithstanding the map, all residential zones west of I fifteen are allowed to have ADUs. So this map does not depict all of the ADUs in the city. It's just the specific clause that this map is a part of. It is confusing, but we, this is the map. So no questions about that. The next amendment in this ordinance is just repealing all of fourteen thirty O four O, so this is that special use permit process. Um, this does mean, all that this does is get rid of the ability for a fee waiver for signatures for an ADU. The land use, um, application, the ordinance text amendment application, and a zoning, a rezone application are still viable pathways and legal for residents to try and get an ADU. They just can't use signature gathering to get a fee waiver. So that's all that this repealing does. Do we have any questions about these two amendments? Awesome. Okay, the next one, the next thing, Kevin, if you can pull up. This is the, if you remember in our work meeting, the, when we discussed these amendments originally, can you zoom in on it? So it's big, so it's just big, thanks. Sorry, Kevin, I know you have one hand of doing that, sorry. Um, next is the council discussed, um, drafting an intense statement. Um, this was an idea we kind of came about through discussions about discouraging ADUs. We met with all all the counselors regarding this or discussed, um, and this is what we have drafted. So in order to pass this first, we want to make sure that the language is okay and that people feel good about that. But then also, passing this would be done through a majority motion here in the work meeting. This isn't a, an official resolution or ordinance. So it's not a night meeting council action. It's just a work meeting council action. So it would just be passed through a motion here in the work meeting. And then if it does pass through a majority motion, what would happen is then this would be an official document that Development Services and the council could use um, as someone applies for an ADU to kind of point to the council's position on them. That doesn't discourage anyone from applying. They can still definitely apply either through an ordinance text amendment or a rezone, but it just kind of gives more context and heads up as for an applicant. Yeah.
Um, I I'm wondering if the language could be a little clearer because I don't, I don't recall, and maybe I'm misremembering that we were wanting to officially discourage a neighborhood from such an application, and this doesn't really specify. I thought what this was about was spot zoning. So we're basically saying we, in principle, don't like the idea of a single property appealing for a rezone. So I'm just wondering if we want to make it a little more clear so that it doesn't sound like we're saying even even a group of twenty homes could not.
Yeah, we discussed that, and it's definitely a change that we can make here and kind of clarify that language. We discussed that on the backend with Development Services and Legal, then practically how that would look at, look like, or how Development Services would then guide an application that would be multiple properties. And there's no current designation in fourteen thirty for multiple properties applying any different than a single property. And so we would have to create that, it would just leave Development Services saying, well, you can apply as twenty properties with us, exact same as a single property, and then I don't know, Brian, if you want to expand on this?
Yeah, I'd just follow up with that and say, yeah, we discussed this quite extensively. And in fact, we tried to reach out and discuss this with the councils because the the two problems, we were aware when we started drafting this that there was at least some interest in that idea. The problem we ran to ran ran into in trying to put that on paper is we didn't know how many counselors liked that idea, and we had no idea where the cutoff was. So we just drafted it without, so that you can tell us what you wanted to, what I want to put in there. Because we couldn't figure out by ourselves a reasonable way to make that decision without more input.
Well, I guess I would ask, uh, my fellow council members for help on that because I thought I heard language in our more recent meetings that there was some favorability to the idea of a neighborhood, but I don't know, I had that same question. I don't know exactly what a neighborhood might consist of in this sense, right?
Or if you would want a specific process for a neighborhood that would be different than the application process as outlined just in city code? Because that would involve a whole new code amendment and different process we would need to draft.
Yeah, I think that Foothills Neighborhood, um, feels very grateful that we gave them that allowance. I think they've been watching this pretty closely because they were nervous that we might be, um, you know, undoing what was allowed there. I didn't think that's what we were contemplating, but if if we're not in favor of
Well, I will say
similar neighborhood coming forward, doing something like that, then
So in that case, the foothills, that application came through through the signature path, right? It wasn't ordinance text amendment though. And they went through the signature path in order to get the fee waiver. What we're repealing now is just saying you don't get fee waiver by getting signatures, but they could still apply as a group. They, the process was the exact same. They just got signatures and did a fee waiver process. They could still do that same exact thing today. They would just have to pay the full fee. They would just also have to coordinate on their own. So they all came in as one application and they all, so before they showed up to apply, they would have to do a lot of groundwork on their own.
And and to your point, Councilor Henley, though, in addition to what Malia just said, this statement though does discourage them from doing that. They can't. We're not making it so they can. But this, you you're right, a statement as written would discourage them from doing so.
I mean, if, uh, maybe, maybe before, uh, I hear from others, uh, one thought that is occurring to me is you could, you could make this much more, a little bit more narrow by saying, um, the city council does not support applications to rezone individual properties or amend city code for the purpose of creating individual ADU, a new individual ADU or legalizing ADUs already in in violation.
Yeah, you you certainly
That way, you 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 at least have that principle there. It avoids the spot zoning question. If some, a neighborhood wants to organize and come before the council with a petition, they would still have that. They just wouldn't necessarily be discouraged.
And we and we discussed that. That goes back to the cutoff thing, right? Because you're exactly right about what you just said, although it then says, if you get your neighbor to go in with you, then it's okay. Right? Because by adding the word individual to it, you're you're drawing a line between one and anything bigger. And and that's what we got into the line drawing exercise that we didn't know about. The the other thing that we talked about extensively with Development Services staff amongst ourselves was we didn't really see a difference in how the process would play out for bigger groups than for individual homes as far as the angst and neighborhood stress that is going to come to you. Um, that was the focus of so much of the discussion behind wanting to do this in the first place because no matter where you draw the line, there's always going to be surrounding, there's people around one house, there's people around twenty houses, right? There's always going to be surrounding people that could cause the exact same problems that were discussed, which is not to say that you can't, that's, you know, that's for the council to decide where that line is. The one thing that I would throw out there is it, in my view, I guess, well, I don't know if I want to go out and make this written data, but I'll just throw this out there as an idea. One alternative to trying to amend this language, if there is, if you, if the council thinks that there is a line somewhere, is to leave this language the way that it is for now, and then go through the process of actually creating an official ADU overlay and process to apply for the ADU overlay that, and do your line drawing exercise in what that process is, right? Now, I know, you know, Development Services doesn't necessarily love overlays, and we had an A and S overlay for decades and then got rid of them, and so this is talking about just going back to where we were before. But as far in my mind, that's a cleaner way to draw lines and open up specific processes than than here. And just by way of example, so, um, Bill can correct me because I don't remember the exact details, but under the old A and S overlay system, what it was is you couldn't even apply for the overlay unless the application included a certain acreage or was for an area adjacent to, immediately contiguous to an existing overlay area. Right? So again, that that's an option there to solve this dilemma that you're talking about. But other than throwing that out there as an option, I don't know what the right answer is, defer to whatever the council wants to do.
Yeah, in drafting this, we didn't have a clear direction on all of those nuances, so we just went all the way to disfavoring all of the above, and then we can always make those nuances more clear.
I like it. It stands. I think it's, I think it's well done.
I do, I do wonder about, um, the language does not support, which to me means what it says. And then later you say strongly disfavored, which to me leaves room.
Well, and and hearing goes, this is the problem with intense statements to begin with, right? Is I think you have to leave room, right? You can't put yourself in a position where you don't want to put yourselves in a position where we're later filing a lawsuit, fighting a lawsuit because somebody made an application. You deny the application, and then their argument is you didn't even consider my application because you told us beforehand you were pre-biased and wouldn't even consider it. So I think you have to leave the door open to let them apply and and state that you're fully going to consider the merits of their application, but you are sending a signal that we've seen a bunch of these beforehand. We haven't liked them so far. We don't expect that we'll like them in the future. So that you don't waste your time unless you're really committed to it. But if you're committed to it, we'll handle it fairly.
But then to award that more strongly than to say in the first line, the city council discourages applications to rezone.
Yeah, that was, I I spent, I spent probably half a day on this, and one of the versions did say discourage. And, uh, again, it comes down to personal work. I liked, I liked does not support better than discourage. Because again, we're saying, if you want to do it, we're letting you do it.
Okay.
We're just trying to tell you how we feel about it beforehand. So it's a personal word choice.
Okay, that's fine. Other comments? Inputs?
Uh, I, I'm opposed to this entirely. Um, in part because we've got a changing council, which is always shifting and changing. The intent will change over time as we get new council members. But also because this appears to be completely against several of our housing goals that we set up in our new general plan that we adopted that encourages infill and development. And this rezoning is one of the ways that we do that. And if we're doing these individual properties as the owner wants to rezone it to increase that use, which again, is a very modest density increase. Um, and some of these properties are houses that are already built with this capacity. Um, I think that we are, we are working at cross purposes with our overall goals and with the market needs. We've had some. Some applications for these spot zonings while I've been on the council that have been entirely appropriate. That we have wanted to approve because it made complete sense and there was support. From the neighbors. It was it was just the right thing to do. So. And I I understand that. There's a lot of distaste for spot zoning. Um and the reason we get that is because we have pretty restrictive zones that stop people from using their property. As they could in many other cities. So we have created this this problem and what we're saying with this is like, we want to keep it this way and continue to restrict. Not only your use of the property, but your. Your ability to even apply to change the use of your property. And I I don't like that. So. I I appreciate. The work and effort that went into this. I gave some comments in a leadership meeting to try to help with some of the issues on the language. But I I am opposed to it.
It seems like in some ways we've solved the problem by eliminating the signature route so that we don't create those tensions. But I think, yeah, if we. If if it, I mean, I would be opposed to outlawing it. I don't think it's even um. You know, what you you're you are definitely not recommending that we can move in that direction because that creates other problems. So if we're. We're not going to outlaw it. Um I I just don't see. Why we would create a statement at all if we're worried about discouraging it from happening. I think it's already pretty built in at this point that it's. Less likely to happen. And I think. As Rachel just pointed out, then it. Also over overcorrects and ends up punishing people who. Have legitimate needs to rezone their property, which is pretty rare. Um but mostly contentious because of the signature thing. I don't think it was the fact that somebody most most recently in in my neighborhood asked for it. Because we had that other case just a month before um on the west side that we approved. And the neighbors wanted it. And there weren't signatures. There was just neighborhood feedback on that one, as I recall, but anyway. So I think I'm. Feeling similarly, I don't I I think we've we've corrected the problem pretty well. I don't think this statement. Does a whole lot. To. Solve anything.
Okay, thank you, George. Becky.
I like it, but I'm gonna disagree. I think when people are gonna have to put up, how much money is it? Twelve hundred dollars, twenty one hundred dollars?
Eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred dollars, yeah. So for I'm gonna put up eleven hundred dollars, I would like to know. And I think that that is being pretty fair of saying, hey, you know, if you want to gamble with your eleven hundred dollars. Shoot for the stars. But you know, you're gonna be on an uphill battle. I think that's fair. And I think that's. Forward with people. I think to just say, just leave it, leave it out and just say. Eleven hundred dollars. Oh, let's get this done. I I I think that's harsh. I think I think we're being very fair. I think we're being very upfront. I think we are being. You know, we've not done this in the past. Your odds of this going forward. You know, so far it hasn't been very good, but if you want to. If you want to take that gamble at eleven hundred dollars. Go for it.
That's great. Thank you, Becky. Travis?
That's actually a really good point that you hadn't thought about that. That uh. You know, we're trying to do a service to them by letting them. It's like when I was dating, I really wish the girls would have told me right up front. Instead of seven, seven dates in, right?
Close to home. Legislative intent, right there.
Um I think, yeah, that's a really good point, Becky. I'm glad you brought that up. I need to weigh that, but. I think um I think I'm a there. To me, there's been times when it has made sense for an ADU, like. The parking was great. The neighbors were fine with it. The the lot was good and. I wouldn't want, I I still want those optus come to for to us, and I know that that's not how everybody feels. So. But I think just face on that out of principle, I don't think I want to sign my name to this. I think that's what I'm what I'm struggling with. But that's a really good point. I'm glad you brought that up.
Gary?
Yes, Craig.
Yeah, I'd like to to weigh in as well. I I also agree with Becky. I I feel for those people who are bringing. Going through great energy and expense and time and I I think it makes. I think it's good common sense to communicate. How we as a council feel. There are, again, half of the city. Is available for uh ADU, so we are ADU friendly. I think we are abiding by the plan. I don't think we have an obligation. To change the, you know, I know every single neighborhood, so. Uh I think this makes it clear. I would want to know if I was a citizen and I I would sign my name to this.
Okay, thank you, Craig. All right, well, we have this on tonight's agenda, right?
No, this is just for because this isn't attached. This isn't a resolution or an ordinance to pass an intense statement. An intense statement is just a council motion, so we just.
So we'd actually be looking for a motion now, right now, to either approve this or amend it in some way. If no such motion is made or. Such a motion fails, then it's done.
Yeah, tonight will just be the.
Sorry.
So Gary, I'll make a motion that we approve. The statement as it is.
Okay, motion to Council Bogdan to approve with a second by by Council Christensen. Thank you. Counselor Whipple?
No.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Handley?
No.
Counselor Bogdan?
Yes.
Counselor Hoben?
No.
Counselor McKay?
Yes.
And Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
So that motion passes by a vote of four three.
Okay, great. And then tonight will be the map and O four O.
Okay.
And not this.
Thank you. All right, we will now take a a break.
I'm I'm sorry, I I. I know we just finished that vote, but I I didn't know whether we resolved the question of. The neighborhood. Question, is that something we are going to table for another conversation or? No, meaning what? Atrees.
I'm unhappy with things as is.
I am too.
That's something. So for example, where I made that my comment before about the overlay. So if there's if there's a. There's something you'd like to pursue, which is either. Ending the mending that statement in the future. Which you investigate in overlay zone, something like that. I think that would be a motion to them.
Okay, all right, okay. Okay, we'll take a break then.
Turns out I only have two more meetings, so.
We'll take a ten minute break.
After today, yeah.
Well. Three more with the.
With the campuses.
Oh, yeah.
Recording stopped.
You could always. Thank you, Kevin. We'll reconvene now our council work session. Our next agenda item is an ordinance adjusting design standards in the Provo City Code. For certain development in the campus residential zone. So be presented to us by Dustin Wright. Number of planners. Hello, Dustin.
Hello. Yeah, so this is a text amendment um. You can go to that. Jump to that third slide here. So the applicant uh for this text amendment recently. Uh applied for a rezone to the campus residential zone. And he got approved to do a five unit uh. That was his concept there. Um following. You know, so through that process, he originally submitted a eight unit project. Um with the design standards that were in the code, he had to make some modifications and. That's how it went from eight units originally down to five, which got approved. And now he's he's come back and is looking at doing the the eight units. Again, and so to do that, he needs to amend the code that has the. Sections um. That we'll show here in a second, but here's. Here's just kind of what the. Uh surrounding area kind of has some architecture that would. Resemble what it would look like without those design standards that he's requesting changes for. So I just included those as examples. Um but essentially what he's looking to do is is amend two of the design standards. Uh the first one being the thirty foot. Habitable residential floor area on the ground level. Um so that's there in our design standards to help. Create a interactive. Kind of more vibrant street front than if it weren't there. So it requires. Currently that you have residential unit facing the street. Um helps with that pedestrian um. Visibility, things like that helps with uh with those components in in urban design. Um so that's why it's there, taking it out. Is what he's requesting for the um campus residential zone. The other one that he's requesting to to have removed. Or or modified, I guess, is better for the. Projects that are under ten units in the residential or campus residential zone. Is that uh there's the one where the driveways need to be pushed a little aside. And the reason for that. Design standard is to kind of help make more usable front yard space and not be divided by. A driveway going down the center. So those are what. Those help uh create a. A design in our neighborhoods that's more inviting and pedestrian friendly. And so his request to. Uh to you guys is to make a change in those design standards to um. To not be applicable for buildings uh that are under ten units in that campus residential zone. Uh the planning commission recommended. Uh to approve it on a four three vote. And um if there's any questions you guys have that I might be able to help with, I.
Counselor Bogdan.
Okay, so from watching planning commission. My understanding is. As of right now, he could still go forward with whatever he wants in a pro zone. It's just discouraged because we are redoing our code. Right?
Yeah, so it's um so he's currently approved to do that five unit. If he wants to move forward with the eight unit, he could pursue a um a pro zone. Change, um but yeah, we have been discouraging those as those are somewhere looking to get rid of.
So I guess my feeling is is he's got another avenue. I don't want to open up a door.
Um I think this is an extremely small door, and I love it that you you added. We see unlimited to the campus residential fund. Because I think this kind of info and increasing the numbers. The maps that we can is really sparse in this stuff, not everywhere. So um I love it that it's just under ten units and that's just in the CR zone. So I am all for it. I think the street is perfect for it and both CR zones to be appropriate for it. Like they all know it's. There's not that many.
I assume the developer will be there tonight. Be in attendance, okay.
And Becky and planning commission, they it was not put at the CR zone that's been added. Just FYI.
Yeah, so the planning commission discussed instead of having it apply to all of those.
So this narrowed it significantly.
And the applicant was.
It was just, yeah, it was. I don't know what zone was. It was it was everything. So this narrows it significantly.
So that's really helpful information. So does that the the staff recommendation just sounded?
Neutral.
Neutral. Would you change that to? Um that you think this is a good idea because it's that narrow? Or was that neutral language there all along, beginning to end?
Yeah, making it uh, you know, reducing it more to campus residential obviously limits the scope because it is a, you know, citywide impact. It's not just his property that. This would apply to it apply to any future. Um campus residential zone. Um so while his might look a certain way, another one might not. So while. There's benefits to, you know, helping increase the infill um density here. Um you know, can come at the cost of. Sacrificing some of our design standards and and that street appeal that we're also trying to do. So it's kind of the. Weight there, and that's kind of I think why we took more of a neutral thing there to.
Okay, so you said it doesn't change your neutrality. I mean, I don't I read the neutrality is we're not really excited about this because of that. Um it has a benefit because we like the infill, but there's a pretty. Uh you that you had concerns about the 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 uh. These standards affecting. Other parts of the city negatively. So you don't share the feeling that it's narrow enough? With the with the campus residential zone being the only. I mean, it seems like a pretty small. Thing, right? Building complexes under ten units only in campus residential. Feels to me relatively safe, but. I'm just trying to understand the neutrality, I guess.
Yes, so we do like and value our design standards. But if you're going to do this by doing those two things, just the campus. Of residential zone and ten units or less. You're opening that door very narrowly. It's very rare for us to get. A stacked product. It's ten units or less. So this was a pretty creative solution the planning machine came up with. When the staff was spoken.
And in fact, Bill, the three. Illustrations are all more than ten minutes, right? The three. Built in us are.
Those are, and some of those that he should it doesn't show you. Wouldn't be today's design standards in terms of building materials. Someone building that's all siding on the side, you couldn't do that under other provisions of those design standards.
It's pretty ugly. And the dumpster.
Reminds me of an old city center we once used to have.
So with this, I like the functionality of the change that we're able to get more units. Are we also going to make sure that they're not ugly like this?
Yeah, yeah, the size standards were not allowed that.
Okay, and he sent in a picture. Do we have it? It's brick.
Yeah, he'll have an updated picture tonight in his slides. Uh this was one submitted. Previously to that, the the eight unit uh. One there, so. It still is that open driveway to get to. Parking that's below the structure. And so that back area is is, you know, the back of the structure, but it's all parking underneath the building there.
Any other questions for Dustin? Thank you, Dustin. I'll see you tonight. Next, we have an ordinance amending an existing development agreement for a fifty eight units. Single family subdivision in the R one eight zone located. Approximately at twenty four eighty west, nine sixty north in the Lakeview North neighborhood. Presented by Aaron Ardmore.
All right, thank you, counsel. Uh so this is just up for our kind of a kind of an intro. Um it's not on a. Meeting agenda for tonight or but it could be in the future.
So it was originally, right? Then it got continued?
Um no, no. So this was just a work meeting item. Um so we're trying to gauge what level of support there would be to taking to a hearing.
Okay.
Um the the original. Rezone, uh the original development agreement. Is very similar to what's being proposed in the amendment. Uh there's two changes uh significantly uh. The exhibit B, the layout of the lot. This one here. Um so that was filled with twin homes. Uh there. So that was filled with twin homes. They're they want to keep the same density, but they want to do a detached product. So that is the change in the exhibit. And then there's one other change. In section four of the development agreement, there's a line about confirming wetland status that's been done. So we didn't see a point in in having that as a condition still in the development agreement. So it's just those two changes that the applicant is seeking. Staff supports this just like they did the previous.
Yes, counselor, okay.
Do we know why the change?
It seems to be a market thing. The applicant is here. If you want to ask him that question for more specificity, but it seemed like as they went and marketed this. The detached product was was getting more hits than a twin home. Is that correct?
Good, yeah, I'd like to talk to the development.
Sir.
Hello.
Hi. Um, I love, I think this is great. I agree with you about the market. Is that this a market reason?
That's the only reason why this is higher. This is exactly yours.
Okay. Oh, yeah, your name.
I'm sorry, my name is Garrett Sealy representing. Myobolid LLC, which owns the property.
Thank you. I'm also wondering, so legally residential on the west side can have a use. So do you plan on marketing them as they used or finishing the basements or do they have basements?
Obviously, certainly, they're all small home grades because of why it is.
Okay.
So Bill, the reason why we're doing this is because when we took it to market. When we first thought this that the twin homes would make a better use here. And we didn't increase the density. I don't know if you remember this going through. We didn't ask for any increased density. But every builder that we talked to has asked, can we convert this to single family detached? And so that's the reason why we were going through this process.
I think they'll be very popular.
I do too.
And given how small the lots would be with the single family detached, I don't think you would make the requirements for off-street parking for an ADU anyway.
I probably agree with that statement. I mean, these are all public streets, but.
But you would have more old street parking.
There's no way.
Yeah.
With the driveway and everything else, I don't think you'd ever make that.
Yeah.
Correct.
Physical possibility.
That's right.
Do you have a sense of what the price point difference? Is between the twin home and the, I mean, is that the?
It's not, I don't know if that's driving it, but I just think it's received better with the consumers to have a single family detached versus attached. Unit. So do I think the price point will go up a little bit? I do, just because I think that's more desirable. But I don't think it's enough to offset it too, but it's not way out of whack. So.
So we did a. We did a statistical sound survey a couple years ago, and it was highly favored to have single family homes with a little yard. Like they wanted a little yard at least and the single no shared walls.
I think a lot of that's that's what we're seeing in the art place right now.
And I do think we need move up homes on the west side, as Becky would say.
We do. I did not receive a single negative comment about this. Positive all the way around. They would prefer. Detached walls rather than attached walls. How many bedrooms do you expect to have in these?
You with this type of home, you can do three. Most of them will be three bedroom, but you can do a four. So it's a three bedroom with a loft or a four bedroom with a loft.
So that's still not going to be in a move up.
Well, we move up from like a condo or some of the two bedroom homes.
I don't know what she does. We definitely be in move up. So this is the next step, if you will.
It is probably about the same what's around it, right? What's around is about four bedroom. Four or five.
There's no attached walls.
Well, neither is the stuff that's around it. I mean. You've got a lot of split entries around it, which are at least four. For bedroom, three.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
So glad you're here.
Thanks.
I guess one more question really quick. You haven't built since two thousand and three. Are you going to move fast on this, you think?
It was this is approved. I think it just goes to staff for the approval for the final plat, which is hindering on this if I'm not mistaken. Once that's approved, then we will move forward. We're anticipating great ground end of January, first of February.
And he just told me he spoke with two residents that live. Really close there today at they came to the meeting to speak. I think I think it was a positive.
It was a positive. One was the Ellsworth, which is directly to the east of us, talking about. How we're going to put a fence up and make sure that they're taken care of because they have chickens and we have sun still. And we just worked out a deal so they're there. They were taken care of. And then another one was on the west side towards the wetland area. He just wanted to know if we were going to remove the one that we are moved.
The wetland is going to be a huge benefit. This is going to now. Generational green space. So are you going to put a fence all around it?
There's already a fence. If there's a fence that's there existing for the one that was built years and years ago. We're not going to upgrade that fence. It's just going to leave it just as is.
That's the one that was done as a neighborhood matching grant, right? Yeah, it was done. When we still lose the. Neighborhood chair. But yeah, it's so far a really good positive feedback about this change. From the neighborhood, yeah.
Thank you, Gareth. Any questions for Erin? All right, we will now, if there's no objection, we'll recess the municipal council and convene as the RDA governing board by unanimous consent.
Hello, welcome to the RDA business. So we will fair a resolution. Of the redevelopment agency of Provo City designating a survey area and authorizing related actions. For a potential community reinvestment project area. This will be presented by Melissa McNally, our RDA director.
Hi, good afternoon. Do you have the? Do you have the the proposed map? Yeah, it's in it's in the, yeah, it's in the resolution. Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so today I am here to present. The creation, the possible creation of a new community reinvestment area for the west. Side of Provo. This this map represents. That area. And the resolution. Basically gives the RDAs permission to move forward with a project area plan and budget for this area. I have started a draft of a project area plan and and that was included in your council packets. It is a very rough draft. There are a lot of a lot of changes that will be made to that and. And you will see all of those things and. Before any action is requested of of the RDA board. Do you have any questions right now?
Yes.
On these.
Bugged it.
So many. I am very, very uncomfortable with all this. So I guess I'm going to start out with south of the Lakeview Parkway. That land. The farmers. Feel like they were robbed of land south of the Parkway. Because of the way that was negotiated and how that was done. And it was told that that land was unbuildable. And. I am very strong that we need to follow that. We told them that. We paid them pennies on the dollar for it. We either need to turn around and pay them. What is worth for the land that we have? Or we need to just not build on it at all. The next thing that I have is there's a lot of residential zones in here, including my home.
That's where you move off that first issue.
Okay.
So what you just said makes a lot of sense.
My question would be. The. Piece right at Lakeview Parkway and the I fifteen on the south side, we did already zone commercial. For development, so. I would suggest that we leave that piece in, but then take the other pieces out? Or do you are you suggesting taking it all out? We take it all out, we should take away that commercial zone.
I'm for taking it all out, but I I could leave that up to discussion with the RDA board of whether we want to leave that in or not. I mean, that that piece south of the Parkway has been a rub. Even by the farmers for a long time. It was even a rub from what I understand from my friends that were on that. That committee. To put it in there, but the current economic development director decided that. That needed to be in. So it was the residents that didn't necessarily want it in and Bill's like, yeah, the residents never wanted it in. That was just a push from the city to put in there. So I'm I'm game to take it all out and I'm I'm a hundred percent okay to take everything out.
And Becky, can I can I just say that this is just? A rough. Area study. When a project area plan comes before you, it will be much more refined. And show exact parcels that we're looking at.
Even so.
And south of Lakeview Parkway. Aside from that one little, that one little portion that Bill just pointed out. Is is not anticipated to have any kind of development.
Even so, anything on this map. Needs to reflect that because we send a message. I mean, we even sent a message to me when I saw this, right? It it's a huge message that is received when we do things like this. And I know it's not intentional. Okay. But it is, and it needs to be removed. The other message that we're sending is when we say this is West Provo. I have so much contention. In West Provo right now between the north and the south because of the Walmart. And the desire for people to be have grocery center and. And it is a huge conflict and I have a neighborhood chair that is just so obsessed. With this that it can't be let go. And it wasn't just him that brought it up to me. It was other people that have brought up the obsession. Of this and how it's marketed and how it shouldn't be marketed that way. How we need to relabel it so it's not West Provo, maybe a Southwest Provo theme or. Or something different. But we need to figure figure that out. This that Walmart being a south grocery store is very emotionally triggered. And then moving on to the housing portions, I'm very uncomfortable with the housing portions being in there. I want to know why all this residential is in here. I'm also uncomfortable with this is all green built. This is huge. We should be having somebody come in right off the freeway because they want to not paying them a million dollars plus a hundred and fifty rental townhomes plus. Increment, right? And that was also something that was brought up to me is, gosh, why can't we add Center Street to this? Why can't we add Lakeview North to this? Because. It's now starting to become a fairness thing. If the south gets it. I have to have it too. And so there's. There's a, there's a lot of this. There's a lot of. Especially where. The first draft of the general plan had East Lakewood under redevelopment. This makes a lot of my neighbors very uncomfortable, including myself. You put this into a study zone, what does that mean for future? What does that mean if we're upgrading sewer? Does that mean we're going from three units to an acre to ten? Because now all of a sudden we have capacity for that because now we're using. Incremental funds for them. So I'm very uncomfortable with with all of this at this point.
Right. Catrice. Did you have a comment or question? Oh, Becky handled it.
I'm just listening.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, I know this is an area where we do want to see some significant redevelopment and we want to encourage that, especially by. You know, closer over by the airport, by the regional sports park and then by that I fifteen connector. So. I think that. Becky's comments regarding the the parcels that are south of the Lakeview Parkway are very well taken. I've. Just seeing the little like wetland markings on there indicates that if those are developed, there are significant impediments to that development. You have to do more environmental review. You have to do more engineering and everything. And it's very likely that in the past, those things would have been. Real economic impediments that would make it financially infeasible to develop it. But as land becomes more valuable, then those costs. Are changing the calculations. But I. Respect for what what Becky is saying would be comfortable if we took out. Most of the area that's south of the Lakeview Parkway, except for the that portion that we've already rezoned as commercial.
Right.
Would that be a difficult change?
No, it's not. It's just. We'll just rebound the map. It's fun.
Now, is it all of the area, Becky, south of Lakeview Parkway, including that's the portion that's immediately south of the regional sports park? That you feel is?
It's it's all very, very contentious and I've been told that the farmers will. Take up a class action lawsuit to come against us because that was something that was negotiated. Very, very. It's very, very, very contentious. I mean.
How long ago? Because I don't know.
Lakeview Parkway right away was small. Fifteen years ago.
Fifteen years ago? I mean. The statute of limitations for any sort of action like that, even if it would be successful against a governmental entity would be. Like.
Rachel, we're still looking at what they what they did. The way they did it was wrong. I had one farmer that didn't sign for five years because every time she went in. One of the city employees had her southern piece tied into the stuff and she kept on saying, no, 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 no. They offered them pennies on the dollar for that. And then they forced them into a cell and they forced them into it for pennies onto the dollar. It is still, the anger is still very high.
I I fully believe that. I I'm just trying to think through my like legal brain to. Or what kind of. Of recourse they would have through the legal system at this point in time. But that's that's a conversation for a different venue. So. Melissa, can you give us information on the inclusion of all of these residential properties in it? Why is it not just the ones that are going along the Lakeview Parkway to the north of it? Like, why, why this large?
It's just a, it's just a study area to include. If there are parcels in between residential or anything like that that we might want to include. And that's a conversation I'm happy to have with it with the RDA board. There are really are only a few parcels we're looking at, but for the stu- for study purposes only, we've done a wide swath so that we can look at. Others other properties that may have potential. Our intention is not to go redevelop residential areas. It's just included in a study only area.
So it might be helpful to talk about the difference between a study area and a project.
Right.
Area.
So the study area is is. Like it sounds, you just go, we just go in and study the the parcels and what's there, what we think might be coming. And what would be economically beneficial for the residents in the area and for Provo City. And then for the project area, that's where we have defined. Which parcels we are going to include in the project area. And it will just be those parcels when when the when the. Project area plan is adopted, it will only be for those parcels that we've identified that we want to include in. The community reinvestment area.
So it may well be that by designating some of these areas or some of these neighborhoods within the survey area map. That you will look at and say, this is the best and highest use. We want to preserve this neighborhood. So any plans that we actually make that are more concrete. Are going to work around this to protect and preserve this and to make sure they don't have negative impacts on these existing uses.
Well. Fifth West is Fifth West and is going to need to be expanded. And so my immediate neighbors are very concerned about what that means about their homes. I mean, if you do an RDA area that does include the expansion of Fifth West, who's going to lose their house? So I I think that having these discussions also with. The Lakewood neighborhood, the Sunset neighborhood, the Provo Bay neighborhood. And letting them know what to expect and what this means is going to be very, very helpful. I would limit those to just those three neighborhoods because. If we get any more than that, I'm afraid the conversation is going to turn to, I want this one to the river.
Now, I guess what's making sense to me, Becky, is that. The last several months, we've heard very loudly and clearly the desire for commercial amenities on the west side. And whatever you eventually adopt as your area, that's going to help commercial development happen or could potentially help commercial development happen. So it's, I think we need to balance this to. Objectives, your ideas or goals.
I mean, is there, in other words, if if we don't do this, the risk is we end up with a lot of residential, but not enough commercial. And if that happens, then we end up with a lot of traffic. Because everybody's trying to cross over to the other side of the city or to the north. In order to get their amenities, right?
Whatever you eventually adopt doesn't bind you to any future approval, but it opens the door to help us get. The commercial amenities and proximity to the neighborhoods that we've been hearing very loudly and clearly the west side residents want.
Right. And one of your criticisms that we've had with prior rezones from agriculture on the west side is that we're just rezoning it to be used as warehouses. And so this would be an opportunity to more fully define what we want to have. Coming into the area and to kind of create the conditions where we can court the sort of development that we want.
I get your point, but at the same time. I get your point, but at the same time.
Well, this was shocking to see. The, like, the map is shocking. We didn't under, I didn't understand it was a
Study.
Study.
Yeah.
I thought you were saying, oh, let's do this. Like, this is ridiculous.
Yeah.
So.
And I'm happy to revise the map so that it does not include those uh parcels south of Lakeview Parkway.
Who did the, like, how did it get decided?
Um, I was just advised to paint it with a large, with a large area because we're already ha, we are already looking at projects um to come into the area. And it just makes sense where, where that's um a main corridor in between the freeway and the airport. There's a lot of opportunity there.
For sure, for sure.
And I would just add that Seventeen C, the place in state code that governs this, so this is a survey area. And when you go from the survey area, you adopt it through your survey resolution. State code makes it very, very easy to pare off from the creation of the project area, what will actually be the project area that you approve, and this is your CRA. It's not possible to add to it. You need a new survey resolution, a new survey, a new plan, and a new budget.
Oh, we can't add to it?
You cannot add to it. It's very, very easy to have your survey.
So that's why you did extra bits.
And then you pare it down when you're creating the CRA, but you cannot add to it, you have to have, start over.
Gary is next.
Well, so um, with that in mind, why not take it to, in your study, to center? Isn't that where there's much uh more potential? Well, not.
We could take, we could, we can amend the map to take it up to the center. If that's, if that's what the board would like to see, I'm happy to do that.
All right. Yes, Becky, back to you.
But then I'm still gonna go back to, there's a lot of division between north and south, right? Especially right now. And so like, like I said, they already said, not just center, why not have it extend all the way up to twentieth North? I just think we just need to be careful with this and how it's marketed and what we do, because there's so much. Yeah, well, we're, what, what? What's being created is a division between north and south because they feel that the south is getting all the amenities and the north is not getting those amenities. We're talking north of the river, right? Lakeview South and Lakeview North. And they've got that little area right there, north of uh the high school, that seventeen acres and that Irish homes thing. And I think it would be appreciated if they had that little portion included, if we're looking at a survey area. So at least we look like we're balancing some of this out.
Does the survey area have to be meticulous?
Um, I believe it does for a CRA. And it would make more sense if we want to provide incentives for the northwest area also. It would make more sense to do another project area over there. Not to emphasize the separation of more, but I think that, that might be like so large um that we wanna do something that's.
And see, that's kind of what I pointed out too, but I wanna make sure that that's known in this body. That this is becoming an animal of its own and we need to do something and get ahead of it. But I, I think if we're gonna be looking at these residential zones, especially East Lakewood, because this is entirely of Lakewood. This is most of Sunset and this is a majority of Provo Bay. That we need to have these conversations with these neighborhoods, whoever wants to show up and say, like, this is, this is what we're doing and this is what this means.
And we, uh, I mean, do we need some sort of motion to say, I'm, I'm fine if we wanna extend it up to center, but maybe we just say we approve this to start, but that we intend to do Center Street next. Cause it seems like if you're gonna go up to center, that doesn't make sense to me. You're excluding the north part of center, you might as well say, well, there's a Center Street corridor that's gonna matter quite a bit. And then there's other areas in the northwest that need consideration, so maybe that's a separate uh survey area or stage two or something. And maybe that helps with the communication to just say we're, we're doing this in phases, I don't know.
Yeah, and with this one, we have some kind of imminent development that's going to be happening in this area. And so there are, are businesses who would want to have these tools that would be available to them. So doing the survey is the first step in that process. Um, and so part of this will be the Walmart, but we can also use this to our benefit as we develop around the regional sports park or the epic sports park. So even though we have, you know, the moving agent as that outside entity, this is an opportunity for us to create those very specific plans to court more people. Um, I think it would be entirely appropriate if we accept this resolution with that, that small modification. And then um, as a board, instruct Melissa to come back with additional survey areas on the west side, it kind of the Center Street corridor and that northern area. Um, we don't currently have any outside entity looking for it, but we can certainly be much more proactive in creating these conditions so that we can try to induce more development. And I absolutely think we should do that.
Yeah, I'm, I've been worried for eight years that we're gonna build lots of homes on the west side and not nearly enough commercial. And then we've just created a, a really big problem.
Yeah, and so the this, creating the survey area will have us looking at this with intention. And we can do this, Melissa, in a way that we get public input. Is that correct?
We, we can.
Public input?
We can. It's not quite the same as, as when there's planning applications.
But I think that would be really helpful, especially where you've got so much residential area here. And so um, I, I suppose what I'm, what's appropriate now is to look for a motion to adopt this resolution and then hmm, do we? That motion would need to change the map slightly. And then would we do a separate motion for the instruction to get additional input and create additional survey areas? Looking to Brian.
Well, I mean, you're not gonna approve the survey area by motion today. You're gonna, you're gonna have a resolution coming to you and that's gonna come automatically. So I don't even think you need a motion with regard to the proposal.
Well, I was just going off in my notes.
So unless you need a, unless you want the motion to change the map. And then I would suggest a separate motion for any additional work besides what's already coming to you.
Okay, cause it is helpful if we give instruction via motion so that they've, they've got a headcount for it.
Catrice, what all are we agreeing to with this resolution? Just to study this area, period? That's it?
Yeah.
Yes. We don't even have to do an area? We're just gonna study it?
Yeah, okay.
Justin?
Yeah, quick question, Melissa. I'm
Yes.
I wanna say that state code, there's a maximum amount of, I don't know, it's acreage or area that can be within municipal RDAs. I'm, I'm drawing a blank on where that is. I don't know if you know, hand, how close we are to our acreage that we could have within um, within CRAs or.
I'm not, I'm not sure. Cody probably knows. I'm not aware of an acreage limit in a CRA, but maybe Cody, are you aware of it?
Neither, but.
There is for an HTRZ.
Yes, for HTRZ, but not for a CRA. To answer, to go back to choose McKay's question, you are not allowed to create a CRA, a community reinvestment area, before you've done the survey resolution. So basically what this does is it tees you up to allow yourself to create a project area plan and budget. It doesn't obligate you to do anything other than it gives you permission to create a plan and a budget. Before you have a survey resolution adopted, you're really not, you're not doing anything in the official capacity.
Okay, you're mentioning a budget. Do we need to put money into this area then? Is that what you're saying?
So any money that, that does come from it is from tax increment, so.
Right, that's my thought. You said budget, that just.
Right, yeah. So all that the survey area does is it allows you to create a project area plan and budget. It doesn't obligate you to do anything. It just gives you that permission and then the city staff can come and say, hey, we've done the survey resolution. Or we, we have the survey area, we've created a plan and budget now for you to look at.
All right.
It's just the first step.
Are there any more questions or board discussion on this? All right. And then Brian, was this something that requires a motion for this resolution?
No, I don't believe so. I mean, you as RDA chair control the agenda for the RDA meetings. It's already on the schedule for this to go, so as long as, I mean, you can certainly ask for one in order to what, here, here's a better way to put it. Our normal procedure would be if somebody, if one of the board members thinks I don't even want this resolution to show up on their agenda, they should make a motion now to say, let's not even pursue this. Otherwise, normal course of business would be for the RDA chair to bring this forward next to our GAV.
Um, and with regard to changing that southern border of it, should we do that by motion or, okay?
What was the answer?
Yes. It was a vigorous head nod.
Okay, I didn't.
That is.
Uh, I'm just wondering, uh, I'm just wondering if, I mean, it seems to me to make some sense to study it. I mean, we, I think the reservation is very strong that Becky's expressed and I think there's some real serious reasons to make, be very cautious about it, but I don't, I don't have any knowledge yet of why a portion just south of the park should be excluded or what have you. So I mean, I'd, I'd maybe recommend that the count, that the staff come back, when they bring it back, that they have examined that question and make a proposal with as minimal amount of uh, land as part of the survey study south of the Parkway as possible. I don't know if that's too vague, but I, I wouldn't be ready to eliminate the commercial uh, section that had been identified earlier. And I just don't know if there's anything else there that uh would make any sense, but I'm I'm inclined to wanna leave it all open anyway. I think that just makes the most sense, but I just I feel like I'm flying a little bit blind.
All right.
So I'd rather have staff look into it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
All right, well, if that's the desire, then there's no need to move to change this map. We would just go forward with it as it is. So the question is, is there a motion to change this survey area map?
I will make the motion to change the survey area map to everything north of the Lakeview Parkway that's in the map with the exclusion of the portion that is currently zoned commercial. Yeah, of south.
Well, then that would include everything north of the Parkway plus the commercial, but that's south of the Parkway. Okay, if a motion is there second. All right. Any discussion on the motion?
I'm sensitive to the issues that Becky has raised, but I would like some further study as well.
All right. Um, well, then let's take a vote.
Rachel?
Oh, Craig, yes, the voice from the beyond.
Yes. Um, I, I would add my voice to, I would also like to see further study of this. I, I too would like to just pause uh for Becky's concerns and make sure that we, we do a little more study before we act.
These are wetlands, Craig.
I'm aware of that.
All right. Okay, so the motion on the table is to amend this map and we will now take a vote on that. So Hoben?
Yes.
McKay?
Yes.
Whipple is yes. Garrett?
No.
Handley?
No.
Bogdan?
Yes.
Christensen?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm confused and it, it may be the drugs I'm on, I apologize. I, I thought that um, Becky, I, I, you voted differently than I thought, so I, I, I must be confused.
The motion is to move forward this map, but change the southern border of the map so that it coincides with the Lakeview Parkway. And the only portion of this survey area that would be south of the Lakeview Parkway is that area that's already zoned commercial near the I fifteen.
I see, okay. Then I would say yes.
All right. I believe that passes by a vote of five to two. Yes, Bogdan.
And so just, just so you're aware, people here feel the same way about the wetlands that you guys feel about your trails and your critical hillside overlay.
Yeah.
This, this is something that is sacred ground to a lot of them. So you do have the feeling of the farmers feeling ripped off and you do have the feeling of people that are really upset the wetlands are being filled on.
So, and that may be uh something that we explore later is other ways that we can protect these wetlands. I think that would be.
I think just, just like we have with the, the river, we've looked at uh, you know, frontage and how do we approach that? I, maybe, maybe we also ought to be taking a look at how we approach the wetlands, because Becky, I think your, your point is well taken. We, we do need to preserve these wetlands and I'd love to see trails, I'd love to see people using, being able to get out on them. So there may be a way of making them very attractive, uh, just as we've been talking about making the riverfront more, much more attractive to people using and visiting.
All right. That is outside of the RDA purview though. And so going back to the RDA business, um, is there a motion to direct our, the executive director or the director of the RDA to move forward with um, identifying additional survey areas on the west side? Perhaps the Center Street corridor and farther north.
Okay, so I will make a motion to include everything, and this is what, two fifty south? Where was your mind that you painted? Is that two fifty south or is it three hundred south? I can't make a determination on exactly. Okay, so.
Before you make your motion, so.
Okay.
Think what was invited, and you can always do something different, what was invited was not a motion to change this map.
Right.
But to just ask staff to come back with other proposed areas to connect surveys on.
Yeah, so we don't have to say the Center corridor or, no, say like south of the river and north of.
If you have specific general areas that you wanna make sure they include, you could certainly mention those, but you don't need to go into any great detail about exactly what you want the boundaries of the new survey area to be.
Um, but if the desire is to have more survey areas on the west side so that they can tell that we're looking at trying to redevelop or do.
So it's probably better to make it broader than more narrow, is what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So just make a motion that they look at other areas in the central and northern part of west of the freeway for survey areas for RDA?
Yes, that is a completely appropriate motion. All right, we have double seconds. Okay, is there discussion on this motion? All right, let's take a vote. Uh, McKay?
Yes.
Whipple is yes. Garrett?
Yes.
Handley?
Yes.
Bogdan?
Yes.
Hoben?
Yes.
And Christensen?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you. All right, I believe that concludes our business. Oh, but it doesn't.
Give it to George.
Thank you. That's very great, you said.
If there is no objection, Kevin.
Get on the minutes.
We will now adjourn the RDA governing board and reconvene as the Provo Municipal Council by unanimous consent.
We'll now consider a motion to postpone.
All right.
Thank you, Chair Garrett, yes. There's one topic to be discussed in, proposing to discuss in both meetings, which deals with character and competence of an individual, which is one of the improved reasons by statute, so to be appropriate, move to close the meeting.
All right. Motion? Uh, I'll look for a motion to close the meeting.
I say move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Bogdan, a motion to close the meeting.
Yes.
Counselor Handley?
Yes.
Counselor Garrett, yes. Counselor Hchul?
Yes.
Counselor McKay?
Yeah.
Counselor Hobens? Yes, Counselor Christensen?
Yes.
Okay, our meeting is now closed.